Good City Council for Wednesday, October thirteenth to order, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
That's a member bow. Here. Councilmember Bokey.
Here.
Councilmember Branstadter.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Moss.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Whalen has been excused and Mayor Anderson.
Here.
You have a forum?
Thank you. We only have one item of business, but it has several segments tonight. That item is a review of the 2022 federal legislative priorities, state legislative agenda and policy manual in 2022 Pierce County. We have the Assistant to the City Manager, Michael Vargas.
Hello, can you hear me all right?
Yep.
Cam.
Hey, so good evening, Mayor Anderson and council members. Thank you for joining our special meeting tonight to go over the City of Lakewood's updated policy priorities. So for members of the council I have not met yet, I would like to introduce myself. My name is Michael Vargas and I am the new Assistant to the City Manager slash Policy Analyst. So I would like to go over the agenda for this special meeting before turning it over to our government relations team. So first, Mr. Jake Johnston from the Johnston Group will present the updated federal legislative priorities. Then Ms. Shelley Helder and Ms. Brianna Murray from Gordon Thomas Honeywell Governmental Affairs will present the updated state legislative agenda and policy manual. And lastly, I will present the updated county policy manual. And also included in your packets are the new AWC legislative priorities for your information. So with that, I will now turn it over to Mr. Johnston. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Anderson and council. Thank you for the opportunity to be with you tonight. It's lovely to see you all again, even in the Brady Bunch screen that I've got in front of me right now. With that, I hope you've all had the chance to review the the draft agenda that's that's in your council packet this evening. Thanks to to John and to Michael for helping compile that and put it together in preparation for tonight's session. I wanted to just take a moment to briefly kind of outline where we're at in 2021 and kind of how that bridges into 2022. And then stand for any questions the council has about where we're at. We have, I really think landed some planes in 2021, some initiatives that we've been pursuing for a number of years on behalf of the City of Lakewood. We, with with the return of kind of the federal funding earmark program, we have a project that is still in contention at the federal level right now. I think as many of you know, Senator Murray put forward an earmark request for the South Tacoma Way project in the appropriations bills. And Senator, I'm sorry Congressman Strickland put it forward in the House Transportation Bill. Unfortunately, the House Transportation Bill no longer has earmark opportunities available to it, but the appropriations bills are still alive and well. We expect the Senate prints of those appropriations bills to be available as early as next week. And we are cautiously optimistic that funding for South Tacoma Way will be in that in that bill. So that's that's a slight change from the council packet in front of you, but that is where we're at with the with earmark requests. In addition to that, we continue to make progress on some of the transportation policy issues that we've been working on. Congress is right now in the midst of trying to figure out what a bipartisan infrastructure bill is going to contain. Hopefully they will reach agreement on that this year. There is optimism, believe it or not, despite the headlines that are prevalent in the in the news. And we have a number of policy provisions that are moving forward in there. Number one, there's a there's a tranche of new federal transportation grant programs that are proposed as a part of this bill. And two of those programs, thanks to advocacy by the City of Lakewood and joined by thirty-three other Northwest cities, we actually have a medium-sized city set aside in both of those programs. So we've got a thirty percent set aside in one and a ten percent set aside in another. And while that doesn't sound like maybe enough, it's certainly better than zero that was there beforehand. And it gives us a platform to build off because Congress has never before kind of designated a portion of federal transportation funding into segmented opportunities for medium-sized cities to compete. So from that standpoint, we're really excited about what's happening there. The other issues that are important to the city, Senator Cantwell and Congressman Kilmer have, again with City of Lakewood's support, have also put into the transportation bill, a brand-new federal grant program for salmon habitat restoration and culvert replacement. And this is the first time the feds will have basically a dedicated grant program for municipalities to use for culvert replacement and other issues. So we're kind of excited about that. Finally, an issue that we've been working on for a while, and it's kind of a good news, bad news, is we've been working on the Defense Community Infrastructure Program since it was created, since the idea came and was born in the City of Lakewood. We continue to put projects forward in this grant program, but regrettably have yet to be successful winning funding under the program. In 2021, we submitted a revised application to for Washington Boulevard to complete the North Ford Access Project. And we were not selected as one of the projects that was funded by the DESEP program this year, even though we were successful in 2020 in changing the eligibility criteria for that program to make projects like Washington Boulevard more successful. So part of our job moving forward is to figure out where do we slot into the priorities of the DESEP administration? And do we need additional legislative language changes in order to be more competitive moving forward? I feel like I'm monologuing, so I will stop for just a moment and entertain any questions from council.
Any questions for Mr. Johnston at this point? Now that you caught your breath, Jake?
All right, I'll keep it logging. So the the federal agenda in front of you is is both.
Councilmember Branstadter has his hand up.
Mr. Branstadter.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I did have one question on the recent comments that we just heard about the the Defense Community Infrastructure Program perhaps needing a further legislative fix in order for projects such as the JBM North Access Project to be successful because it doesn't, it's not representative of the type of projects that the two award years have done. So I guess, what are you suggesting we do in that regard? And is that an indication that we shouldn't be that optimistic that the the project will actually get funded with the current rules?
Thank you, council member. Appreciate the question. It's a tough one to answer directly because it's a new program. So as the new program is being set up, we're evaluating kind of where the awards go and then drawing conclusions based on that evaluation criteria. From from our analysis, sir, we believe that the Washington Boulevard project is the perfect project for this program. And in many ways, it was the definitive project that created the entire program to begin with. So then there's a question, right? If that's true, then why haven't we been successful in our application to get the funding out of it? And that's a problem that we don't entirely understand. In the first round of DESEP funding two years ago, they funded entirely human infrastructure projects, things like childcare initiatives, recreational opportunities, employment assistance and things like that for community, for military communities that were hosting military bases, but weren't hard infrastructure that really was the core of that program. So we went back and successfully modified that program in legislative language to make sure that infrastructure was weighted appropriately, kind of as they went through the next round of funding. So the next round was done in 2021. And I would say that, you know, of the projects that were funded, I'd say seventy to eighty percent were were traditional infrastructure projects. However, they seem to be much more on the water sewer utility end of the scale than they were in hard, you know, connecting people to the installation. And so if that's true, we may need to talk to our delegation, we may need to talk to the committees of jurisdiction and continue to talk to the appropriate office at the Pentagon to see if there's a word criteria that needs to be changed so that our needs to to get people to and from the facility, you know, could be funded with this program. So I realize that was a long answer to your question, and maybe I avoided it a little bit, but I don't know the short answer. If your answer was, are we not going to be competitive in this program? I think the answer is no. But we need to make sure that as the program matures and stabilizes, that true infrastructure projects are eligible to be funded within it. And so far, they really haven't been.
Okay, well, thank you. And I guess that getting that assessment and if legislative action is needed rises in the level of priority that we should be trying to trying to to influence. Is that what you're telling me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So the remainder of your of the federal agenda in front of you is is on one hand, it's a continuation of kind of our efforts to date on some of these policy issues. And on the other hand, it's really directed on bringing additional federal funding to the city to support your identified priorities and projects. And that is both individual infrastructure projects, but also the human capital programs that are so important to the City of Lakewood and its community. Also, as a close, you know, the the city has done just an absolutely phenomenal job of approaching its federal delegation as a shared. What I mean by this is the city doesn't approach and and asks for things. The city approaches the delegation with kind of a shared constituency and really has built very, very strong partnerships. You've got all three of your constituent offices back in DC that understand the city's priorities, know who to talk to in the city, you know, hear from the mayor, hear from the city manager, hear from members of of the council. You know, understand what the priorities are and how they can help. It's a really strong partnership. And it's one that we can continue to build from. And it's why when we try to bring positive ideas about the DESEP program or about the Department of Transportation funding, or about the other policy initiatives that we've been working on, we have a real open door and a willingness to engage in in that process to see what can be done. And your delegation is extraordinarily well positioned right now to be of assistance to you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Bokey.
And Jake, the 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 human infrastructure bill, the 3.5 trillion and what little I can see out there and on the internet is they're trying to come to some compromise in the or something. Is there anything within that bill that impacts municipalities that you know of? Or is it really truly human infrastructure that really down to the individual level?
The answer, council member, is both. The overwhelming majority of it is a series of initiatives that are what I would call human-focused. And there's a debate right now in terms of, in order to bring the number down, because 3.5 trillion is not going to fly in this Congress. So the debate right now is is one of the ways that you buy down that number is you can do fewer things in that bill. Or you can do a lot of things for a few, a shorter amount of time. And that is one of the great debates right now in terms of of how to bring that number down. In terms of things that are specific for the city, the answer is yeah, there's a lot in there. Basically, the things that were left out of the bipartisan infrastructure bill have been moved over to the Budget Reconciliation Bill. And they are in the debate right now in terms of things that may or may not be funded. This includes the overwhelming majority of the, let's call them the climate portions of the transportation package. There's a lot of additional transit funding in there. There's electrical vehicle infrastructure and charging stations. There's things that will be directed for the city to manage and institute those programs. There is a lot of housing language in there that the city would have a role in, and there's tax policy that I don't think directly affects the city. But there is the state and local tax deduction initiative, which is also a big component of the of the the spend side of the bill as well.
Well, I'm I'm thinking, now that you say that, and thank you, thank you very much, two questions. So analysis, I have it on here on page seven, CDBG and Home. Are the older programs that included structure and then my point?
Councilmember, I'm sorry, your audio is sketchy on my side. Have a hard time getting up your question.
Okay. Page seven, analysis. Do you hear me? There's there's mention of CDBG and does the human infrastructure plan include the whole or just all new stuff?
So it's mostly new things that have not been funded. And I want to be clear, there's three primary kind of spending or revenue bills kind of moving their way through Congress, each of which affects the city in different ways. The what you're talking right now is a bipartisan, it's, I'm sorry, it's a budget reconciliation bill that is essentially one-time money that can be used for a ten-year window of time that is is used to to set up and establish a lot of these programs. The second one is the bipartisan infrastructure bill, which has passed the Senate and a ver- a different version passed the House. And then the third is your routine appropriations bills, and those have been pushed back to December third. So CDBG and Home, which are programs that have existed for decades at this point, their their funding levels are determined in the appropriations process and will continue to be so as moving forward. That is also where the earmark request for the South Tacoma Way project is potentially alive on the Senate side as well. So it's not connected to budget reconciliation or the transportation bill.
So it's to know the impacts, but that new tax credit that they came up with a part of the really $300 a month, and it's a little more than that on for children under five, I think, children under six. It's got to be helping us a lot because the way it's designed is even though it's a tax credit, people who don't pay taxes still get it. And it's monthly, or it's supposed to be paid out monthly. I'm not, I'm not sure that we've got everybody signed up who needs to be signed up, and I don't know how that's that's occurring. Because I saw something recently that people who are eligible aren't even signing up for it. So, but I think that that overall really probably is very helpful to Lakewood. It's something that here at city government, we're not counting, right? But I think that getting, obviously getting money directly into folks' hands. So hopefully some version of that will survive the I I know if they have to do it based on reconciliation, it's not a life. And that's okay. I get it. Circumstances change. But certainly, I my guess is is that if we can that maybe as a city or as a state, we're going to have to do some things to make sure that people are signed up to that program because it's my understanding is taking you know, tens of millions of children out of poverty, if it works the way it's supposed to work. So I I think we, you know, that that would be one thing for me that would be you know, e- even if they had to reduce the income levels a little bit, right, from, because I think it's it's pretty high up there. So if they reduced who can get it, but not the amounts, so that poor people are actually getting it, that would be wonderful because I we don't even know the impact that that's having on our community right now.
I can easily add this to my monitoring and reporting. Back to you and to council. And then John, I'll defer to you and the mayor in terms of if you want to add this to the legislative agenda, I'm not happy to do so either way. The council member, to your point, the the national numbers on this program are astounding. The talking point is that if this program were to be permenitized, it would cut childhood poverty in half.
No.
Which is amazing.
Yeah. Jake, do you know what the, where this template's been used in Europe? I I know anecdotally that it has been something similar.
I don't, sorry.
Any other questions for Jake? So I just note that at the end of the month, I'm going to be attending the Association Defense Defense Communities Installation Innovation Forum. The, I'm on the Federal Outreach and Advocacy Committee, which is the basically the Legislative Policy Committee that makes recommendations to the board. Amendments to DESEP are going to be a topic of discussion. We were supposed to have a meeting yesterday, got, but it got bumped, so I think we'll have one next week before we get down there. There are a few minor housekeeping type of things. But there's a general feeling that the Defense Department's moved the right way away from the arbitrary, I would call it, soft infrastructure, that what it really was an infrastructure and some kind of political chicanery that happened with that to something that was more intended. But as Jake said, it really focused on the utility and energy resiliency, I think, was and excluded roads. We have to figure out how to prioritize roads, and so I'm going to try to advocate for something that opens that avenue up for us, pun intended. Anything else, Mr. Farmer?
If if I can offer one comment, Mayor, back about that, it looks like the DESEP program is was was set up, I think, to really recognize some of the needs of of urbanized military installations, which have unique challenges when compared to more rural ones. And yet, a preponderance of the grants are going to rural bases, where you don't have a lot of the local economic infrastructure to support some of the some of the some of the needs, right, that are in those communities as well. So I think that would be an interesting conversation for you to have with your colleagues at ADC.
Yeah, it it, they're looking at things like, you know, where swimming pools or fire station that are outside gate and can be used by both the base and the local community when the local community didn't have sufficient coverage because it's smaller than the base. So you're you're right, they're urbanized areas, kind of get left out on that. And if you go up to Bangor, you'll see that, you know, it's not an area that you would put in a major sewer line. And they get a sewer line. Ms. Farmer?
I wanted to compliment the document on being both a a listing of priorities of of things that we're interested in when we're talking with our congressional delegation, but also as a storytelling document that explains a little bit about who we are and why these things are important to us. And I really like how how it's all, there's a setup at the beginning, and then we go into into the into the priorities. And I'm wondering if the council is interested in adding the connection of our council goals to each of the things that we're asking for, just to have that extra connection.
Thoughts on that, council?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I would think that that might be a good suggestion for the state and county legislative priorities. I'm not quite sure that it would, that our council goals, though, would resonate at the federal level.
I think they do. I was going to ask Councilmember Branstadter, I was going to ask when we got when we got to the to the state piece as well. I guess I would argue that they do. They there are transportation requests, there are human infrastructure requests, economic development, safety. Just an idea.
Well, I guess I would say that that's true when we're talking with each other. I just don't know that the council goals resonate with Senator Cantwell and Senator Murray and
Agreed, agreed. And and I and I bring it up not to put five pages of council goals in here, but literally just to to make an annotation and note that that this request is in line with the the council goal for for being one of the safest cities in in Washington State. So it's it's a little, because this document isn't just for them, it's also for us, it's also for our community, it's for anybody who goes online to read about us and what's important to us. So it's a storytelling document as well.
Any other thoughts from council? You know, I've I've seen that done more for internally, the internal justification of what you're doing than messaging to outside, you know, for example. If your council goal is to reach the reach Mars by 2030 and you you're and your legislative ask is for a launching pad, you you can say, here's, we want a launching pad, but internally, we can justify that as following under under one of our council goals. We are going to field from those. I've seen things kind of stacked like that. So go back to Mr. Johnston. Is there more?
I think I'm at the end. I appreciate your comments, Councilwoman, on the on the the look and the the tone of the document. I will say that I'm responsible for a good chunk of the content, but Michael is responsible for organizing it in this way. So for those of you who don't know Michael yet, that's, he gets pride of authorship over the over the presentation aspects of this.
Great. Well, thanks, Jake, as always, and I look forward to you queuing us up to make successful asks in DC. This is a great preface to that. So thanks again.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city.
I think it's back to Michael now.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Johnston, for that good presentation. And I would like to pass it over now to Ms. Helder and Ms. Murray for going over our state legislative agenda and policy manual.
One second. Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Brianna Murray, and I'm joined by Shelley Helder. And we have a presentation slide deck to walk through before we dive into the the draft legislative agenda and policy manual that is included in your packet. So I'm going to share my screen and bring that presentation up. I'm going to hope you all can see that. Michael, can you give me a thumbs up if you can? Great. Okay. So this evening, we are going to provide an overview of what to expect during the 2022 state legislative session. We are going to review the advice that we give in developing a legislative agenda. And then I'll stop, take down the PowerPoint, and then bring up the draft legislative priorities document and the draft policy manual document to go through those in detail with all of you. In total, we have about forty minutes of presentation, which leaves about twenty minutes for questions and answers. We'll take questions as we go, but I'm not going to pause and ask for questions. So if you have a question, put your hand up and we'll we'll pause at that point. Once you all have provided your input this evening, we will work to get these documents finalized with the goal of meeting with the city-state legislative delegation well in advance of the 2022 legislative session in January. So with that as our roadmap for this evening, I'm going to dive right into an overview of what to expect in the 2022 legislative session. This is, as you all should well be aware, at this point, this is the second year of the two-year legislative biennium. And the legislature operates on a two-year cycle, and I would be remiss if I did not start with saying that we were And I would be remiss if I did not start with saying that we were extremely successful in the first year of the legislative biennium in accomplishing the vast majority of our legislative priorities, including significant capital budget appropriations, the authorization of tax increment financing, funding for the community policing program. And so we're coming off a significant year of success and within, and we're still within that same cycle. This next session will be a short 60-day session. Legislators are indicating that we should lower our expectations because the first year of the biennium was so full of activity. They will focus on developing supplemental budgets that make amendments and modifications to the biennial budgets that they adopted earlier in 2021. In the operating budget, they have received some very positive revenue forecasts. So there's ample funding within the operating budget. We're not anticipating any budget shortfall or any budget cuts. If anything, there will be some budget adds within that budget. The capital and transportation budgets, although, are a different story. Both of them are more constrained. The capital budget has about $80 million in bond capacity reserved from last year. And the transportation budget has long been limited on funding. And really, there's not many funding opportunities there without a transportation revenue package, which we'll, we'll talk more about here shortly. In addition to developing the supplemental budgets, the legislature will consider policy changes. Any legislation that was introduced in 2021 but did not pass will automatically carry over into the 2022 session and new policy bills can be introduced. As of today, we do not know whether the format of the 2022 Legislative Session will be virtual, in-person, or some sort of hybrid of the two. But I can assure you that Shelley and I are prepared to be your advocates in, in no matter which format they choose. We learned some good lessons this last virtual session. Democrats will continue to hold the majority in both chambers. As the second year of the Legislative Biennium, committee assignments will generally remain the same. They, they largely do not revisit those. There will be some shifting due to some retirements that have been announced, but otherwise, they'll remain the same. Following the 2022 Legislative Session, half the members of the Senate and all the members of the House will seek reelection. And they will be seeking reelection to new district boundaries that will be established by the redistricting commission in November of this year. Given that a reelection immediately follows the 2022 Legislative Session, it's likely that controversial issues will not advance. So with that background in mind, I want to move into Shelley and I's advice for you all as you think about your 2022 legislative agenda. First, we encourage your legislative agenda to be hyper-focused. We've encouraged this in previous years and have found it to be quite successful. In short, in legislative session, we, as well as legislators, only have so much bandwidth. And if we can help them focus on a set number of two to three top priorities, we're more likely to accomplish that short list than if we give them a lengthy list of dozens of priorities. We would, given the budgets and the status of the budgets, we would encourage funding requests to focus around the development of a transportation revenue package. There's extremely limited funding within the capital budget. And traditionally, the operating budget does not make appropriations directly to cities. So the, the funding opportunity is really within the development of a transportation revenue package. We'd encourage your priorities to take advantage of current opportunities as well as the current political climate, to have some consistency with previous legislative agendas and legislative efforts. Then, in addition to your top two to three priorities, we recognize that there are dozens, if not hundreds, of issues that impact city business. And so those additional issues that the city is likely to weigh in on are outlined in the policy manual, which provides city staff, as well as Shelley and I, the direction we need to advocate for your positions in stakeholder groups, at committee hearings, and so on and so forth, while still being able to keep our legislative delegation focused on those top two to three priorities. I want to conclude by saying the recommendation, the recommended drafts in your packet proposals are our recommendations based on conversations with city staff as well as what we believe will be the most, most palatable and accommodating to the current political climate. But at the end of the day, this is your legislative agenda. And we want your feedback tonight to make sure that as we are spending our hours, days, evenings, weekends advocating for you, that we are, we are advocating for the items you'd like us to be. So with that, I am going to transition to our legislative agenda and pull that up on the screen. And I'm going to turn the speaking over to Shelley Helder.
Thanks, Brianna. Good evening, Mayor and Council. And so I'm going to walk us through the first few items on the draft legislative agenda. Brianna is pulling up on the screen here. Brianna mentioned it in her overview, and it's not news to anyone that the legislature is developing a new transportation revenue package. And the development of a package only occurs every, every five, 10, 12 years at a time. And it's the opportunity to advance requests that would otherwise exceed the capacity of a biennial transportation budget. And so the priorities on the document here are really capitalizing and taking advantage of the opportunity ahead of us. So we are continuing to request $250,000 for the multimodal transportation study. This has been a city priority for a few years, and it's been difficult for the legislature to fund due to the limitations on the transportation budget in the last few years. And since this is a relatively small request, we also identified a larger project, which is essentially the continuation of the existing I-5 JBLM corridor improvements. So for a little bit of history, in the 2015 Connecting Washington Package, which was the most recent transportation revenue package, the legislature funded the construction of three interchanges through the I-5 JBLM corridor, Thorn Lane, Berkeley Street, and DuPont-Sillicum Road. And as you are probably all aware, the reconstruction of those interchanges has allowed for the widening of I-5 and also grade separation from the railroad. The fourth interchange that was initially identified for improvements, but then was not funded in the last package, is the main gate interchange or exit 120. So this priority would advance a request for funding the construction of a new interchange that would address the current at-grade rail crossing. It would increase safety and would improve base operations by providing a single access point for both main post as well as North Fort. This would be a longer-term request. If funding is secured, we anticipate that it would be in, in out-years because there would still need to be time to allow for design and engineering and other planning steps. And there is a one-pager for both the main gate interchange project and the multimodal transportation study. Those one-pagers go into a little bit more detail about the specific request. And I'm not going to pull them up here, but they are in your packet. I do want to note, the multimodal transportation study is the same document that was developed for this request in the first year of the biennium. So there's no change to that document. The main gate interchange, one-pager. It has a picture of an alternative design for the interchange. It's not necessarily the design that would be pursued. It's simply an alternative design that has been considered. So before we transition on to the next item on the legislative agenda, I'm going to stop there and see if there's any questions about either the main gate interchange item or the multimodal transportation study.
Thank you, Shelley. Mayor, I think we've got some questions. Do you mind if I call on folks?
Yeah, why don't you just take them?
Great. Councilmember Branstadter, I saw your hand first. You're on mute.
I do appreciate the, the, the work that's gone into and preparing for it, and I particularly appreciate your advice about strategy going into doing this. My question has to do, though, with including as a major city priority, the main gate interchange at exit 120. You know, clearly, that's not in the city. And how does our legislative agenda dovetail with the South Sound Military Community Partnerships agenda that this would seem more central to?
I'll stop at that question, Councilmember. And I will get to it when we review the policy manual, and I'll briefly mention what the SSMCP priorities are. SSMCP does support the request for funding for a main gate interchange improvements, but it is not one of their number-one priorities this coming session. And, and that's only because they have a high priority that they've been working on for several years to advance the project along I-5 from Mounts Road through the Nisqually River Delta. So really, this main gate interchange project is, it, it is a priority for SSMCP in the sense that it's important to the partnership and it's important to the installation and the communities throughout the corridor. It just does not have a champion, or has not had a champion, since the last transportation package.
Councilmember Branstadter, I will add that it's, it's our understanding that, you know, one of the things that contributes to the overall vitality of, and quality of life in Lakewood is relieving gridlock on the I-5 corridor. So to the extent that this improvement does contribute to that, then it's for the overall benefit of the community, even though it is located outside the city.
Okay, I guess my concern is that our agenda having some consistency with the South Sound Military Community partnership and, you know, so that even if this was included in our agenda as a, one of the primary focused items, would you say that that, if we were, if we were to also add the Nisqually Delta area of I-5, which, to be honest, in my opinion, contributes much more to the gridlock along I-5 than, than, than the design of the interchange at exit 120. And given environmental and other things, and you spoke about addressing things that really reflect the current climate, political climate that's there, it does seem that the Nisqually Delta and the climate aspect and environmental aspects of that really fit into that at the moment. And that our, so whether we should add that in here or even substitute it for this main gate and move the main gate into the policy manual. That was my thought.
Councilmember, I think that's, that's interesting feedback. I don't have any objection to either of those suggestions. Shelley?
Well, I'd like to jump in here as, as someone who has dual roles in SSMCP right now. The SSMCP ASK is a collective of the South Sound because it runs from Thurston County to, to Pierce County and the base and, and the tribe. There's really no realistic way that that could possibly be funded in this legislative cycle. They're asking for money to move forward with studies and engineering. The interchange at the main gate is important to the whole pro, process and progress of, of improving I-5. As indicated by, I think it was Ms. Murray, it has a direct impact on Lakewood traffic. It also is one of those times where Lakewood has the opportunity to step forward and be an advocate on the part of the base that really can't lobby in, at least not directly in Olympia. So it's an important piece of the puzzle. It's something that can be potentially funded much earlier. I mean, we're talking potentially billions for the, for bridging the Nisqually Delta and environmental remediation. So that's, that's not going to happen. Maybe not in my lifetime, but the main gate can be improved and traffic can be relieved to some extent.
Should we go on to the next questions, Mayor?
I, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Bulkey.
Thank you. So my, my question along those lines is, I guess, where are we at in working on talking about the next set of improvements on I-5 through Lakewood? Meaning, I guess, from now that the Tacoma portion is almost done to 56th or something. And now we've got this gap between, you, you know, we have a, really a pretty, pretty tough intersection. They've made improvements. They've worked okay at 512. And any number, that seems to me like where most of our traffic issues are rather than, than main gate. I, I, I get why we would want to help the Army out with main gate, but do, I know we've discussed this, but where are we in conversations with the state regarding improvements along I-5 and the corridor that would bridge the improvements in Tacoma with the improvements that we have in Tillicum?
I'll, I'll take a stab at that. And then Brianna, if you have anything to add. And I will note that the current Chair of the House Transportation Committee, Representative Jake Fai, has, has one of, has identified as one of his priorities, extending the HOV lane from Tacoma down to Thorn Lane in Lakewood. And so the extension of that HOV lane would require reconstruction of three interchanges. And one of those interchanges is the 512 interchange. So I guess the most direct answer to your question is it is arguably part of the next transportation package already.
Okay. Okay. So, oh, so the only intersection would, okay, to fix would be the 512, but that needs, yeah, okay.
It would fix 512, two others that I'm not remembering off the top of my head.
I do want to highlight, highlight something, and that is that the transportation revenue package negotiations have been occurring for a few years now. And they're occurring in earnest as, as we, as we speak. And there is certainly an effort for the state to try and meet in a special session in November or December of 2021 before the 2022 session to adopt a revenue package. If that, if that were to occur, I think they would operate off of their existing proposed project lists. And we're not likely to be well positioned to secure funding for the main gate interchange. And that being said, I think Shelley and I don't believe it's likely that that special session will occur and that we're going to continue to have discussions around the next transportation revenue package through the 2022 legislative session and perhaps even into 2023. I will note that one of the negotiating points in that revenue package is how how much of the revenue generated through a package should be allocated to projects versus programs, like grant programs for bike ped lanes through the Transportation Improvement Board, through the Freight Mobility Strategic Investment Board. And there are some legislators who are arguing, hey, we've done this project list approach now for several years. We just did a package in 2015, and here we are again in 2021 with a new project list before us. Maybe the project list approach isn't right, and it should be more formulaic. I'd imagine that the end solution will be some sort of melding of those two policies, both the formulaic distribution of funding and projectless funding. We want to make sure that within that dialogue that we're requesting for the types of investments that would be of benefit to the Lakewood community. Certainly, the multimodal transportation study is something we've worked on for several years to advance the I-5 JBLM corridor improvements. The main gate interchange seems like the next logical component to request funding for that isn't already in the works. But we'll really take your direction. I just wanted to flag that we're going to request 225 million for the main gate interchange if it's on the agenda. I don't want you all to think that that is a slam dunk, easy thing to accomplish within the revenue package discussions. Okay, Councilmember Farmer, I think your hand is up.
Thank you. My questions are pretty reminiscent of both Councilmember Branstadter and Councilmember Bulkey. I was, I'm still unclear if the main gate interchange request is ours or was it Washdott's? Or does it live somewhere else and we're championing being the champion?
That's a good question. So I guess the most direct answer is this would be a city of Lakewood's request. However, the funding would go to Washdott to implement the project since it is a state highway. There is not that I am aware of any other entity that is championing this request. JBLM has identified it as an important improvement from the installations perspective, and SSMCP has been working to kind of move it along, but it is not a priority for any other entity that I'm aware of.
Thank you. It wasn't clear, reading it, that there was actual benefit to Lakewood. And both both of you have spoken eloquently on the benefits and the vitality and reducing the gridlock. And one or two sentences to this overview page would really help with, why are we asking? Why are we asking for this? Because it is such a large amount of money. That would be my recommendation. And that's it for me on this one. Thank you.
One additional aspect, I don't think it goes down in print, but it's important, is that we, being SSMCP, Lakewood, South Sound, the state of Washington, have received a lot of mileage with the Pentagon for the $450 million that went into the I-5 JBLM corridor, even though that was primarily for the benefit of the civilian community. Other states build roads to bases, and those things are taken into account, both sometimes almost formulaically and certainly emotionally on a goodwill basis when basing decisions are made. Not that they'd close the base, but do we have support there that merits putting new unit in or not taking a unit out? So it's very indirect, but it's very real.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to make sure before we move on to the next topic that Shelley and I have clear direction. What I'm hearing is to add language into the main gate interchange item on how it is of benefit to the city of Lakewood, but to otherwise continue to have these two items on the legislative agenda. And I guess I would just ask for clarity on whether that's an appropriate understanding of the direction. And I see Councilmember Branstadter's hand is up.
Yes. To speak to the value of the main gate intersection to the city of Lakewood, to the residents of Lakewood, that is an interchange that is quite essential to the school district in terms of the fact that middle school and high school students travel from the base to various schools that are here, being able to go and do that. And so that's an element that could be added, that it's, you know, that it's important locally because of the school district in the city, the city and the space sharing, the school district, and the need to transport students, both for the school day and extracurricular reasons to do that. So that's my comment on that. And one other question is, because this is speaking to transportation priorities, I assume that means things that would be in the transportation budget. And would moving the Washdott maintenance facility be something to ask to be a priority in a state revenue package?
A great question, Councilmember Branstadter. This past legislative session, the state authorized the use of tax increment financing. So, you know, I think for that little Lakewood Landing site, that there's hope that that tool can be an integral part to solving the funding delta on that development. So, and I'll also note that Washdott has been resistant to advancing a request that that be funded within the transportation budget because there are so many demands within transportation that are not focused on economic development or economic growth. They're focused on the need for transportation improvement, whether that's maintenance and preservation or improvements like those outlined on the legislative agenda. So it doesn't seem like a request that would get would be very well received.
Well, I guess my thought was, we dealt with a number of things in the past that we put on the plate and kept on the plate for a number of years and that you were eventually able to move them. And the tax increment financing piece, the way that it finally came out, was really unclear whether it could be used to buy that piece of property as opposed to doing infrastructure on other areas in the Lakewood Landing facility to do that. And you know, I would want to keep the fact that Lakewood Landing is a very important item for the city to the extent that there is a piece of state assistance we need still to make that project full realization viable. You know, that strikes me as should either be a priority or at least should be in the policy manual.
So I want to just reiterate that these transportation requests, I mean, this is your agenda. You all, as a collective body, are welcome to add the Lakewood Landing request on it instead of main gate, in addition to main gate. Same thing with the Mounts Road and Nisqually Delta request. We're really putting in front of you sort of our recommendations based on priorities we've heard from you all previously, but at the end of the day, this is your agenda. So we'll take your direction. Councilmember Bulkey, you have your hand up.
Yeah, and I just want to, your previous comments or to Councilmember Farmer's previous comments, if we can clean up the language on that or improve the language on main gate so that if I'm a citizen of Lakewood and I read that paragraph, I could understand why it's important for the city of Lakewood because it is a little bit odd that something that's a mile or two outside the city of Lakewood is our number one transportation priority. And I would, but I would say my patience with this is fairly short. Like, if it doesn't happen in soon, that if we find a better project to be involved in or to be supporting that's closer to the city limits, that I would not carry that on into 2023. That, and if SSMCP isn't making it their top priority, I don't know why it would be ours. So I feel like we're covering for them on this, but you know, if we tie in the school district like Councilmember Branstadter said and say, here's a reason why a lot of folks live who live in Lakewood, work on the base, use the main gate. It'll increase safety and time to work and that kind of thing. Great. But it seems like a big ask for something that's not in our city. So we'll see what happens this go around, and then we can have further discussions later if nothing happens.
Okay, and I'm just putting some placeholder language in here of, you know, we'll wordsmith it later, but just to know, we definitely want to call out the benefits to Lakewood. If you choose to keep this on your priority list. Councilmember Branstadter, do you still have your hand up? Do you have another comment or question?
So along with your Branstadter's, along with his notation, there are one of the issues with that interchange is the proximity of the railroad to the gate. And this provides great separation with Amtrak starting back up. And the school buses cross that. There are schools on there are many school bus crossings a day of Culver Park School District buses.
So, Mayor, I just want to make sure that it's council's desire to maintain this as a legislative priority with modification to the language, but that that is the desire. Do you guys want to show a hands? Does someone want to object if that's not the desire?
Oh, so I have a different question. I think the reason it's here, when you said there's, you know, a small one and a large one, is that this transportation package would be the, you know, the once in the five to 10 to 20 year cycle, big projects. It's not necessarily for paving an arterial in Tillicum. And so the asks are generally larger asks. Is that correct?
Yeah, so I think that within a revenue package, the type of investments that are being made are significant investments on the state system that communities throughout the state are advocating for. And so if a transportation revenue package were to pass, we just want to make sure that we're putting forward the projects that would be most important to Lakewood for potential to receive funding. Now, I will note that we're a few years into that process, and there are several projects throughout the state that are already included on project lists. And the the funding for Mounts Road, the SSMCP has been requesting for the last couple of years, is included on the proposed project lists. And there's been a lot of advocacy around that. You, I guess, and Mayor, maybe another way of getting this, you don't have to have a big ask for transportation if you don't want one.
But this is for state system projects, basically.
Yes, yeah, the state will prioritize projects that are improving the state system as opposed to if you had a local arterial or road in need of funding, instead of giving you a direct earmark or direct appropriation for that, they would increase the amount of grant funding available through the Transportation Improvement Board or the amount of funding directly distributed to cities as a whole in order for you to meet those local needs. And there's certainly, if the Association of Washington Cities, one of their top priorities is advocating for increased funding for local preservation and maintenance needs, and that that could also be a priority request instead of or in addition to the main gate interchange.
So that's tip funding.
Tip funding or directly funding directly distributed to all cities on a per capita basis.
So I think we're just looking for confirmation from council that these are the two items that we want to see before we transition to the next item on the agenda. Any, I guess I liked Brianna's idea, any objection to having these be the two transportation priorities? Okay, I'm not seeing any objection. So moving on, and Brianna's going to kick us off talking about this item.
Sure, and we can certainly, right, this is your opportunity to provide feedback on these documents, but if you have additional thoughts, we can certainly loop back to this or discuss it further. So this next item really stems from what we understand is council's strong interest to do something around adult family homes. And in particular, we fully understand the desire to do something around the placement of SVPs within adult family homes. I will note that for the many years that we have been your lobbyists in Olympia, we have done a lot of work on adult family home issues over the years. I want to highlight one piece of legislation that was passed during the last legislative session, Senate Bill 5163, which was recommended by the Sex Offender Policy Board, which Councilmember Farmer sits on and was very helpful in advocating for the bill throughout the legislative process. That bill requires the DSHS to document its effort to identify a placement that aligns with fair share principles. It says that a conditional release to a least restrictive alternative must include restrictions on a person's residence in relation to how close it is to a school or childcare facility. And DSHS is directed to use an RFP process to contract with housing and treatment providers throughout the state to facilitate those fair share principles. So that was certainly something that was speaking to some of the things that we have heard in recent years, but nor is it the silver bullet solution to solve all the problems. One of the things in the One of the things in, in the adult family home conversations that we've had over the years is that I've noticed is that what the adult family home conversation is really a symptom of is a much larger issue, which is the equitable distribution of individuals being released from state facilities. Whether that's Western State Hospital, Eastern State Hospital, the Department of Corrections facility. But that it's this larger issue of, of fair share or equity. So the statement that we have included on the legislative agenda is really focused on looking for, looking to support and advance policies that establish equity in how those individuals are distributed throughout the state. And it's a, it's a broad statement. We're specifically recommending not to hone in on a, an identified, specific piece of legislation as a top priority issue. But to push this overarching fair share concept in many different policy discussion arenas. And what I'd like to do is bring up the one pager associated with this issue, which goes into further detail. And so, and as I do that, I'm going to, to shift it over to Shelley to provide a, a bit more granular detail. So Shelley, you can go ahead and get started as I switch over to documents. I think I have to stop sharing reshare in order to do it.
Sounds good. Yeah, I'll, I'll start talking. So the reason that we want to specifically review the one pager on this item is because it, it is a pretty in-depth policy area. And so we thought having the one pager and reviewing it with you all would be helpful for this conversation. So we're, we're calling this request, a request for equity and discharge from state facilities. And, and the intent is to advance county of origin or, or fair share principles. But it's, it's messaged to align with the current political climate, which is really, you know, heavily focused on advancing equity in all public policy areas. So we've structured this one pager to outline the problem, to describe some of the recent examples of the inequity of how the current system works, and then to offer some solutions. So in, in developing and kind of digging deeper into this issue, it became clear that the current system and the processes used by the state for discharge planning are, are not working. And over and over again, individuals are placed into homes in Lakewood, not because they're from Lakewood or even from Pierce County, but because as the state develops their discharge plans, Lakewood has the availability of providers, specifically housing providers. So the proposed solutions listed in this document aim at equity and placement of individuals discharged from state facilities. Not just as a policy, but drilling down deeper into what are the processes at DSHS that result in the current inequities. The first bullet there, it builds upon the bill that passed in the 2021 session that Brianna referred to, which provides some teeth to fair share policies by requiring DSHS to document their efforts to find a placement that's in line with fair share principles. So the fair share policy has existed. What 5163 did is requires DSHS to document that they are adhering to fair share principles. And what we've recently learned is 5163 was limited to individuals, specifically SVPs being released from the Special Commitment Center. But it doesn't apply to individuals being released from state hospitals. So we would request that the legislature expand that policy, expand the teeth to enforce that individuals released from state hospitals, their discharge plans incorporate fair share policies. Another solution would require DSHS to provide a report on the availability of less restrictive alternatives in various regional areas. And then procure additional services if adequate services are not available. So again, kind of drilling down deeper into why does this inequity exist? And then there, as you can see on the screen, there are a handful of solutions listed and many of them build upon one another. They're not meant to be standalone. And this is by no means an exhaustive list. And I have been in communication with staff at DSHS as well as the healthcare authority to better understand the challenges of implementing fair share principles so that we can more effectively advance proposals that will get at the root of the problem and also prepare us to respond to opposition. So I'm sure you all know this is a, this is a really complex policy area. So there, there's not easy solutions. As soon as we think there's an easy solution, it's kind of like whack a mole and another problem pops up. But I do think we have the opportunity to make progress on this issue, building on the success from last session and the passage of 5163, and also taking advantage of the current political climate. And so with that overview, I think we'll pause there and see if there are any questions or comments on the way that we've framed this specific item.
I think Mr. Branstad has his hand up.
You're muted, councilmember Branstad. You're muted.
Muted.
All right. Now I'm, now I'm good to go in terms of fixing the operator error on my computer. The two comments. One is under the some solutions, one of the items is consider counties that neighbor the individual's county of commitment when developing discharge plan. And I would suggest to you that that's part of our problem right now. That if you look up at the section above about the different people that here we have Mason County and Thurston County and King County. People, they choose to have them live in Lakewood, even if they came from a neighboring county where they're getting treated in a neighboring county. And I don't necessarily know that that's something that we would necessarily want to to advocate for. I mean, the, the, the fair share principle should be both have him reside and find a place to have him be treated in his county of origin. So that, that doesn't seem like a solution we should be promoting. My second comment has to do with titling this initiative with the word equity. And that gets confusing because in the current climate, equity is always attached to people. And we're not really talking about, here we're talking about treat geographical entities, counties specifically, uh, the same. Uh, or in going on off. I mean, quite honestly, we're looking for Pierce County to be treated equally or fairly with, as respects to others. In putting equity in here, then starts of look and puts this back into the realm of DSHS or the Department of Corrections saying, you know, we view equity as just trying to find what we think is the best solution for the individual without any of these other restrictions. So somehow to just mitigate that and you know, geographic is a, is a good word to include in the issue because our issue is geographic.
Does that, does the addition of that word address that concern in your mind?
You know, I've just never been aware of the term equity being used in the treatment of counties. Uh, so I, I guess that's why it looks, it looks strange to me. But anyway, those are my two thoughts about the, the issue. The issue is certainly one that deserves a place in our top priorities.
The, um, in the state policy discussion, the phrase geographic equity is, is used fairly frequently. If that's helpful at all.
Go up to Ms. Ms. Farmer and then I have a comment.
I like the idea of referring to it as geographic equity versus, versus equity. There is a lot of talk about equity and a lot of different manners and, and this makes it very clear as to what we're interested in. So, so that makes sense to me. As a member of the Sex Offender Policy Board, I have a lot of thoughts on this, all of which I won't go through tonight, but I am there, I, I overall, I have a concern about, about asking for a policy that unless the conditions on the ground change, this policy isn't going to get us anywhere because there aren't enough treatment providers. They don't make enough money. The housing is only available in certain areas and DSHS is required to help these people get into LRAs and they're, and okay, they've done their due diligence according to 5163, they've documented and boom, another one comes into Lakewood. So I guess I'm a little cynical. And, and I'd be interested, there is a work group from the Sex Offender Policy Board looking into ways to change the underlying infrastructure issues with 5163. Their focus specifically on increasing the number of treatment providers available all over the state. So not really what we're interested in. But I think there are some, there's some synergy, some connectivity between, between what the policy board is doing and what we're interested in doing. And I would, I would love to have a, a little bit further conversation. One of the other things I wanted to bring up was to make sure that we're using definitions correctly in, and consistently in the, in the bulleted list above the solutions section. We talk about sexually violent predator in generic terms. And then at the very end, we talk about a level three sex offender. I just want to make sure that, that there are three levels of, of sex offenders and we, it, I don't believe we're able to use some of those terms interchangeably. And so if, if they're all labeled, if they're all termed sexually, uh, sex offenders, if we could have their levels, if we know, I'm sure we do, they're on the registry. So thank you.
Yeah. Thanks, Councilmember Farmer. I, I do appreciate the comments that having, simply having a policy request without the, the reality on the ground changing is not going to result in the change that we're wanting to accomplish. And I think that's, that, that's the exact reason that we're recommending framing the request this way. We have some solutions listed, but this is not meant to be an exhaustive list. I'm currently trying to drill down to find out what is it that is preventing the state from having additional housing providers. And yes, there are some things that may be outside of our control like home values and, and property values. But that doesn't mean that there are not solutions to that as well. So I guess all that to say, I, I hear your frustration. I, I feel your frustration because Brianna and I have been working on, you know, this has been important to the city of Lakewood for nearly as long as we've represented the city. And I am, I'm, I'm very eager to make true progress on this. And I think part of it starts with working with DSHS and healthcare authority to find out what those barriers are and then to change state policies and state law and state investments to overcome those challenges.
I think the, it's actually pretty simple. The state has been, legislature has with no leadership from the governor's office and does not, just this governor has been unwilling to spend money to build enhanced services, facilities or similar appropriate residential facilities or to fund the operation of, of private facilities of that nature. And so they dump it in, dump these people in adult family homes. I, I'm not particularly optimistic of success. I would like to see something even more aggressive. That flat out says an adult family home is not a suitable placement per person, persons discharged from state facilities who, and then was a level three sex offender, somebody who's killed somebody else, civilly committed for that. The, you know, we're getting the worst of the worst. And if we could at least make an incremental step, I think those, you don't want grandma with a level three sex offender. Put somebody who's killed a family member in with somebody else and they hit him over the head with a coffee cup and, and the innocent party gets killed. So at, at least asking for that simple thing would call some attention to it. Uh, even if it was unsuccessful and if it was successful, it could create a crisis. And the legislature sometimes will act if there's a crisis.
I fully support that, Mr. Mayor.
So just to make sure I understand the, the suggestion is to include the, within the listed bulleted solutions, an explicit ban on SVPs in adult family homes. Is that the?
Well, there's more than, you know, what, what we're dealing with is the higher, highest risks are untreated, high level sex offenders and felony flips for violent crimes. And if there's a way to define with some certainty, those high risk categories and say that this flat out tell the SHS, uh, this is legally not an option to place those people in adult family homes.
Yeah. The level three is your highest risk. And so I think we can be very specific at, at going in that category.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I think we've had that conversation before that they'll defining it specifically for level three. I don't know anything about a level two, but.
I agree with all that too. And I really love the clarification of putting in the explicit level on there. I think that that is very clear. And if that's consistent throughout the document, it just really defines it even more.
So just to confirm that this, the language here is accomplishing the intent you are collectively expressing. Yes, Mayor, for confirmation on that.
Yeah. And if there's some way to define violent offenders. But the problem there that I don't have an easy an, an easy phrase to describe, I guess, is that, that the people who come have not been convicted. So if you're saying they're, DSH will, yes, will find any way it can to circumvent the definition of a violent offender. I, I, as I, somebody smarter and more involved in the issue than I am might be able to describe the dangerous felony flip in a way that is objective.
There are, there are plenty of resources, Mr. Mayor, to get, to get to what you're, you're looking for.
Or will it maybe just include this as placeholder language to refine further?
I will say, I, I do appreciate the feedback and, you know, this is the, the point of tonight's meeting is to get feedback from you all. There have been bills introduced in the past that do explicitly list ban the placement of, of. Um, there have been bills introduced in the past that do explicitly list ban the placement of of um, sex offenders, as well as what marriage referring to felony flips into adult family homes. Um, those bills have not advanced. And so I just flagged that for you all that this is perfectly fine for us to include it as a request. I don't know the political viability of it advancing, um, but of course we will work for it towards on your behalf.
Can't do any worse than what we've done in the past.
Has there been, um, what is the what is the case study? What is the reason that it hasn't passed? And I mean, if this is important to us, I'm interested in digging into the into the details.
Yeah, and it's a good question. It's one of the reasons that I that I have, you know, tried to figure out, well, what what really is the problem? Is the problem that individuals are being put into homes disproportionate rate in Lakewood? Or is the problem that a particular individual, a a lot of them are being put into Lakewood at a at a disproportionate rate? Um, I I think it's arguably both. The, to answer your question though, Councilmember Farmer, one of the concerns with um, explicitly banning the placement of an individual into an adult family home is um, there is concern that it would violate the Federal Fair Housing Act depending on the individual's status. Um, and then I I think the other component is a um, what I have heard is that a level three sex offender could be, you know, placed into their parents' home rather than an adult family home and that that would be acceptable, but that that's no different than you know, there would be no restrictions in in that scenario. Um, as you know, it it is very complex and those are some of the pushbacks to what I have heard. Um, I just wanted to flag that it's been a, that item in particular has been very difficult to advance politically.
Yeah, I I think that the uh, Federal Fair Housing Act is a red herring in this regard because it has an explicit exception for sexual offenders and violent offenders. Uh, they're not protected by the act. Yeah. So so what DSHS will tell you though was this person has a disability, so that protects them.
Oh.
That that's it's an end, they they end run it that way.
Well, Mr. Mayor, you know, I think that what it is that we really have two disparate issues here. One is the geographic discharge location. Um, and the other is a certain specific folks that that just shouldn't be in an adult family home anywhere. And that it may be more appropriate to not to to list them as two separate priorities. Um, perhaps putting the one about uh, up in this area of a major city priority. Uh, being the one to given our, we already have a preponderance of adult family homes of keeping the folks that are really inappropriate for that environment out of them. And then we could move the repetitive continued requests to make the fair share geographic placement, uh, not just policy, but reality and maybe place that back in the in the policy manual somewhere, but separate the two so rather than relying on someone to read the nuances um, in a single policy ask and and come up with both of them.
We we, the policy manual does include um, some additional language, which we'll review when we go over that. Um, but um, I think it 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 does the reverse of what you're suggesting, Councilmember Branstadter. It maintains the geographic equity as a legislative priority and then expands on the adult family homes more specifically in in the policy manual. Um, our, our, our recommendation on the geographic equity being a priority is in part because we think that is um, more likely, we're more likely to be able to advance one of the solutions in line with that messaging um, in this political climate.
And I I guess that in the community that um, there are really two concerns that come up amongst people who are residents in Lakewood. One is just the number of adult family homes regardless of who is in them, which is uh, a concern that is in uh, in in some neighborhoods. But then with with respect to offenders, it's the really serious offenders being placed um, in homes that um, that the I don't think that the residents in Lakewood are all that concerned with the the geographic equity of sex offenders. They're concerned with certain types of sex offenders just shouldn't be in residential neighborhoods. Um, and then and then the secondary concern is there shouldn't be so many adult family homes in the city in the first place. Uh, which I think is kind of a really difficult, uh, you know, that that's something that we're not going to be able to influence. And we're not going to get policy that says, well, you've had enough adult family homes, you can't have anymore. Um,
If I, if I may offer just a little bit of perspective, um, particularly on banning the placement of level three sex offenders in adult family homes, Lakewood has been essentially the only entity asking for this policy in the last several sessions that this has come up. An approach would be that if we can drill down and ensure that there is actual um, fair distribution of individuals released from state facilities, arguably more individuals would be released into adult family homes in other communities. And that would potentially grow the number of communities that would have the same concerns as Lakewood. And so we would have more people with us testifying in Olympia requesting to ban the placement of certain individuals in adult family homes. It is a little bit of a longer game. Um, but I just, I I want to point that out. It's been, that's been one of the challenges with this specific policy request.
Yeah, I and I just want to reiterate, I mean, we've that we've been working on this issue. We understand Councilmember Branstadter that that is the concern of your of your constituents. I I will say, when we've worked on bills in the past, it is the city of Lakewood that is showing up, testifying on the bills and trying to push this forward. And we're kind of at it alone.
Yeah.
We just say that that I am uncomfortable advocating to put level three sex offenders in adult family homes in anywhere. Uh, I I, you know, I'm not so parochial that I just want to say I don't want to technically sex offenders in adult family homes in Lakewood. I don't think that they should be in adult family home um, anywhere. And I'm really, I guess I have a little bit of trouble understanding why other communities would be welcoming to them.
We could be on this issue all night. I I think that's a math issue as a, as our our lobbyists here pointed out, you know, there there are fewer adult family homes proportionally other places and there are few people being sent there. So uh, it's uh, not the same as having a concentration that's a block away from the largest mental hospital in the Northwest and across the water from the sex offender.
Okay. So we're going to transition over now to looking at the policy manual. So just as a reminder, this is a document that outlines the city's position on a variety of issues. And this is a biennial document. So you all adopted this document last October. We're making adjustments to the policy manual to reflect what occurred in the first year of the biennium. The majority of the changes that you'll see in this document are removal of items that were accomplished in the first half of this, the biennium. And then there are a handful of items that are amended to respond to what occurred in twenty twenty one. So I'm going to walk through the document. I'll describe each of the proposed changes. As we go through, let me know if you have any questions or if you have um, suggestions for substantive changes. So the first item there that you see is an update to the statement on commitment to equity. And this is um, just to um, reflect the recent council discussions um, on city, city policies related to equity. And I think most folks have had a chance to review this in advance. So for the sake of time, I'm going to keep moving us along. Again, please raise your hand or interrupt if you have any questions. Um, the next change is removing the capital funding request for Lhasa since um, we were successful in securing five hundred thousand dollars for their expansion. Um, under the community and economic development section, we have a statement of support for general economic development tools. We're recommending removing
Can I, excuse me, can can we go back to the housing one?
Sure.
Um, so I've, we've talked about it because we talked about it at the city level because we almost implemented the policy. Um, is, is this a proper place for us to express our opposition to what what I term statewide zoning? Um, other people would say banning of single family residential zoning. Um, some cities have done that. I guess the state of California has done some version of that. Um, and we talked about our 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 guys senate, our our uh, planning commission sent it to us and we rejected it. Um, is that, is that where that should go?
We do have this statement right here, the local authority for land use and planning. Um, let's see. It it does not explicitly state our opposition to statewide zoning, as you referred to it. Uh, we could bolster that statement if you'd like, but that's what's been in the city's policy manual.
And we've been using this. So Councilmember Voki, we we saw several of those bills introduced last session. Um, we've been using the direction provided under this statement to be expressing concerns with those proposals as they've been brought forward in previous years.
Okay. Well, I mean, I would, I would support if it was more explicit, but I I'll let that up to the other members um, to to discuss and where where that needs to be done.
I think to achieve the the goal that you're intending, which is to have the city oppose statewide zoning decisions, that this language is sufficient for Brianna and I in in that regard. Um, so going back to the statement about economic development tools, we've, we're proposing removing the items that are now obsolete tools. And then it was referenced earlier this evening that um, our request for financing tool for Lakewood Landing, um, we requested a financing tool such as tax increment financing and taxing increment financing was authorized this last year. So we're um, suggesting removing those items. And then the next item is the only topic that's being proposed to add to the um, legis, or to the policy manual. And this is um, in recognition that there is likely to be a robust policy conversation around Growth Management Act reform. And then so what this statement does is it it builds in the recognition of limitations on land use near military installations and in particular military installations with airfields. And the next section, we have um, removed the capital budget funding request for Ward Lake Park and American Lake ADA Park improvements. Uh, both of those items were achieved last year. And there, the historic Fort Stillicum section is just moved from another part of the policy manual. So it looks like it's a new item, but it's just moved over to this portion of the agenda, which where it makes a little bit more sense. We've updated the language um, under state funding to acknowledge that um, these are programs that were funded in the first year of the biennium. So Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program, athletic facilities, those are all grant programs that are funded in the first year. And they were funded. In the transportation and infrastructure section, we've added in uh, reference to the um, priority of the main gate interchange request.
And if we make any adjustments to the language on the legislative agenda, that those adjustments would be mirrored here.
Yep, thanks for that, Brianna. At the bottom of this page, we've updated um, the future commercial airfield section. So just as a brief background, the Commercial Aviation Coordinating Commission is a group that's tasked by the legislature to find an alternative site for a a new state airport. And um, not state operated, but a new airport in Washington State. The initial uh, report from that group included JBLM as a a potential site that has now been limited down to six sites that exclude JBLM, but the um, commission's report or the commission's work is not complete. They're um, supposed to be submitting a final report to the legislature by February of twenty twenty three. So moving on down, the next proposed change is um, a request from Pierce Transit. So um, Pierce Transit's request that they um, asked us to include in the policy manual last year was accomplished. So they are now requesting ten million from a transportation revenue package for the feasibility study, uh, what they're calling Bus Rapid Transit Two, which would serve Lakewood, Tacoma, Fort Crest and UP. In the finance section, um, last year, we developed a fairly comprehensive list of requests related to COVID nineteen response and recovery. Many of those items were achieved or fulfilled. So that's what you see um, struck out here. And then what we've done is we've really focused, narrowed in this item on the efficient um, coordination and delivery of um, the distribution of ARBA dollars. So that's the statement that you see at the bottom.
Shelley, Councilmember Branstadter had his hand up. Now you're on mute. Still on mute.
Actually, I I my question got answered just after I raised my hand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, the statement on state shared revenues is again updated to reflect what was achieved in the first year of the biennium. We've added in the statement about city financial liability for indigent defense, the city's average costs toward indigent defense. That's an average of the city's cost over the last three years. Under public safety, um, so as you all know, in twenty twenty one, the legislature passed over a dozen police reform bills. And um, implementation of those policy changes is creating some confusion and inconsistency throughout the state. So this statement um, is really narrowed in and focused on saying the city supports clarification of um, policies that have already passed, as well as funding for full implementation of those policies. And I see Councilmember Branstadter has his hand up. Councilmember Branstadter.
This particular statement about the statewide police reform seems um, vanilla that uh, that I I I think that, you know, it's not while there are some that need clarification and some that need funding, uh, there are also some that uh, uh, need to be reviewed for unintended consequences they've had on public safety. Um, and I I guess that uh, you you know, if there were you, you, you know, if there were a, some specific items that the, the chief and the association of, uh, of, of police chiefs thought would be rolled black, even perhaps the the elimination of, uh, and, and changing the, the requirements necessary for a Terry stop. For one that has commonly been cited by numerous law enforcement officials as uh, not going and that our chief has explained to the community that it's going to create a, the response in a different way that isn't necessarily going on. So I, I guess I would really, the chief isn't with us tonight, but if there were some specifics inside those, and not many, but, but, but a few that the law enforcement community might be looking to say really need to be relooked. I'd like to know what they are and if you can consider whether we would want to say we support changing them, which is different than clarifying them, um, in terms of doing that.
Councilmember, I think.
On the community, there is a general perception that, that, that the overall impact of all this police reform is make things less safe.
Councilmember, a, a little bit of additional background, um, when it became clear that several of the bills that were approved this past session could be interpreted in, in a, in a variety of ways. Um, many of them impacting community safety. And the Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs asked that the, uh, key drafters of those bills submit a request for an attorney general's opinion. Um, Representative Roger Goodman and Representative Jesse Johnson submitted the request for those opinions earlier this interim. Additionally, just this week, Representative Skylar Rude, a legislator on the east side of the state, submitted a series of questions to the attorney general's office, asking for further clarification based on public safety issue that arose in their community. One of the reasons this statement does not go into specifics is because the likely proposals that will be discussed during the upcoming legislative session are going to depend on how those, uh, requests for an AGO opinion are responded to. It's likely that the AG will respond prior to the beginning of this next legislative session. And that the response will then inform what the statutory changes are that will be considered. So at this time, I'm not sure whether there's adequate information to know what the requests um, will be this next session, nor what requests would be most impactful.
So you, you say that in this realm, it's best to wait until there are specific pieces of legislation that are proposing clarifications or changes. And then support or not support them, uh, as individual pieces of legislation.
Yes. And, and that it, at this point, it would be challenging to anticipate what the specific proposals would be that, that, um, the sheriffs and police chiefs or others would, wouldn't be requesting, given that there's these, uh, requests for AGO hanging out there.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Okay, I, I have a little bit different take on it. The attorney general won't indicated right off out of the box when asked.
Uh-oh.
I think we lost him.
That they would not release an opinion for the election. Did I break up?
Yeah.
Well, if I'm, I said, the attorney general immediately said that they, uh, they would release an opinion for the election. It's an obvious attempt to protect people in the election who voted for very bad position that sometimes intended, in most cases unintended consequences of making people less safe. I would be very well with having an opinion that said that, or a, or a position that said that the, uh, it is we believe that the consequences of the legislation, while they may be well-intended, have significant negative impacts on public safety in the city of Lakewood and the state of Washington. And urge the legislature to correct, uh, those deficiencies. And then we play it by ear.
What I'm really hearing is a desire to have the, the impacts to public safety spoken to. I wonder if that could be accomplished by just adding in some language here that speaks to that. And maybe just saying, um, not even saying clarification funding for legislative changes made in 2021 that have created compliance questions. Need for funding for full implement, implementation and concerns or, or, and, uh, unintended impacts on public safety. Something like that.
Yeah, yeah. I, I, I guess, you, you know, we, I, you talk about unintended impacts. In, in the city of Lakewood, um, I, I get what the legislature was trying to do. I, I think, but they, unfortunately legislators from other communities do not understand that in poorer communities, the overwhelming number of victims of crime are people of color. And so I always feel like legislators from areas in King County are always thinking that there's that they believe they understand a problem that they really don't understand. And I think is unfortunately, uh, it'll take a while, but the, the county is trying to um, but it won't be until next year's budget to try to come up with better numbers about crime. But hopefully the numbers won't be just about who gets caught in traffic stops because that is, you know, there are issues with that. Um, and the early numbers have shown that, that there's, there's, there's equity issues involved in that. But that if we see information, hopefully better information on who is the victims of crime, the legislators will be getting to understand and hopefully ours do. But, um, I, I just think some of them live in a world of kind of make believe almost of, of what they think problems are. When in reality, they're, they're feeding people to the wolves. They really are in some of these situations. Um, and it makes it harder for us to arrest people who can terrorize a neighborhood because of their activities or cause lots of drug use in their, in their activities. It's not happening on my block as far as I know. Um, and it's probably not happening in most of our block on, on, on the city council. It, it, it really is an equity issue, but it's equity turned on its head by, I feel like increasingly out of touch legislators who live in very wealthy communities who are, think they know what the problem is. I, I'm, I'm telling you, making it harder for the police to capture people and prosecutors to prosecute directly impacts people of color much more than it does white people. And I'll just leave it at that.
Think, council member Boki, thank, thank you for that. I, I, I do want to share that members of our legislative delegation have, have spent significant time talking to the police chief. I do think they've, uh, been proactive in reaching out to get his feedback as these proposals continue to be discussed by the legislature. So I just want to assure you that there's, there's good communication occurring there.
Thank you.
Move on to, um, the next update, which is to the language on the community partnership program at Western State Hospital. Shelley?
Yeah. And so again, this is just an update because we were successful in achieving this request, which is every time the state considers a new biennial budget. And so it's, um, language is updated to reflect our success. The, this next page is, um, basically an update to, um, our request to reflect the, the priority. We would update this to reference the geographic equity that was, um, recommended earlier. And just basically this language is capturing um, a lot of what is included on the one pager. So going into a little bit more detail than we normally would on an issue. Then within the adult family home section, we specifically call out that the city supports legislation protecting vulnerable members of adult family homes, um, and, and requests preventing sex offenders and SDPs from residing in adult family homes. There is quite a bit of language that is crossed out and that's because specifically this item here, House Bill 1825 was largely contained in Senate Bill 5163, which passed last year. And then House Bill 1826 has been incorporated into the language, um, that we are requesting as one of the proposed solutions. And then Senate Bill 5038 is again incorporated into that initial language under the adult family homes title. So it looks like every, it looks like a lot has been removed, but it's really, um, it's only removed if it's been achieved. Councilmember Farmer?
Uh, maybe I missed it, but is the language that we would like 5163 to be extended to all state facilities and not just the SEC? Is that in there?
You know, that's a good point. That is on the one pager document, but I don't think it made it over to the policy manual. So I can make sure we have that in.
Thank you.
Okay. And then I think the next proposed change is under the heading of general government. Again, this is an item that was previously there. It's been moved over to the Parks, Recreation and Community Services section. Under Military Affairs, we've updated the section to, um, reflect SSMCP's priorities for this upcoming session. SSMCP has three priorities. Um, the first is to continue to advance work along I-5 from Mounts Road, down through the Nisqually River Delta to address flood risks, salmon habitat degradation, as well as, um, capacity and reliability for JBLM mission readiness. And it points out here that 30% of the workforce lives south of the Nisqually River. And so it's an, an important project from JBLM's perspective. Um, this particular item was brought up earlier this evening by council member Branstadter. Um, so I just wanted to highlight that it is included here in the city's policy manual. Councilmember Farmer, did you have a question?
I did. Um, and, and the mayor mentioned earlier that this project is a, is a pretty big ask. And I was looking up the SSMCP's uh, legislative, um, priorities, one pager, and it didn't, it didn't have any specifics on funding. Do we know how much they're asking for this particular year? They just.
It's a good question. There is not a, a specified dollar amount, a little bit because there, the, the specific dollar amount has not been identified yet. There, the point of the process that we're in currently is we're waiting on the, um, outcome of planning and environmental linkages study or PEL study. That will help identify what the specific scope or segmentation of the work is. And they'll need to be, uh, design, design will help determine what the specific cost is. Mayor referenced a very large dollar amount. The, the dollar amount that's been tossed around for this project is in the ballpark of $2 billion. Um, I, just my understanding of transportation projects and what all would go into this, I would say that's probably a little low.
And, and Shelley, can you speak to what, um, is in the proposed revenue package proposals now it's?
Yes. Yeah. So in the, in the proposed package, um, from both the House and the Senate, there is $7 million set aside for this project. Um, are, we would hope to see that amount increased to more around 200 million. That will help, um, advance this project to the next phase. We're very aware that this, the, the scope of this project will require federal, um, involvement as well. And so really what we're trying to do is keep pushing the pro, pushing progress along, um, to get us to a point where we know more specifically what the dollar need is for construction.
Well, I, I think, uh, you hit on it, but, uh, Mr. Cawfield has his hand up. He's been, uh, more involved in this than others.
Thank you, Mayor. And, uh, council member Farmer, in, in regard to your question and to follow up with Ms. Helder, actually the cost could, two billion is probably on the low end. Um, and, uh, Washdod has estimated it could be up to $4.5 billion. And that's in $2,020. So it is a, it is a pretty significant price tag.
And Shelley, I, I, not, I, I don't, I don't want to correct you, but you were on maternity leave last session. And so I was actually working the issue and I had a slightly different recollection and was able to just confirm it now. So there's 204 million in the, the House proposed revenue package, um, for the project. So, um, uh, that, although I think that is divided amongst other improvements along the corridor.
Yeah. Thanks. Thanks for that clarification, Brianna. You're right that it does include the 204 million dollar amount. It's not specifically allocated to the Nisqually Delta. Um, so that's the slight change in the SSMCP's request this coming year. Um, SSMCP's second priority is related to the Defense Community Compatibility Account. And really this item is about advancing legislation to improve the, the functionality of the DCCA, which is a, a grant program that's designed to support, um, civilian communities near military installations. Uh, we talked earlier this evening about DCIP. DCCA is essentially the state, the state equivalent of the federal DCIP. And really what the legislation would do is increase the likelihood that we would be more successful in securing state funding in the next capital budget cycle. And then the final SSMCP priority is, um, support of occupational licensing improvements. And there are always improvements that can be made for occupational licensing, but SSMCP's focus will be on improvements specifically for military spouses, since that's the, the nexus for the partnership. The last item is simply an update to the statement of support around the American Lake Veterans Golf Course Tax Exemption. And they no longer have a capital improvement request that we're aware of. And so that language has been removed. And Brianna, I'm realizing we should probably remove the, and capital improvements from the title. So that is the end of the policy manual review. And the end of the materials that we had to go over with you all this evening.
I don't.
Any additional questions for the folks from Gordon Thomas Honeywell Government Affairs? Well, I have one. Shelley, how are the twins?
They're excellent. Thank you. They're eight months old and very happy, currently sleeping.
And it, it, does you treat, uh, Brianna as wonderful little child as a cousin here when you're?
We haven't managed to get them together very much. Um, we spend a lot of our time together during the day in the office, but, um, not a lot of time with the kids.
No. You'll find time for that.
The, um, I, I don't want to extend our evening discussion, but, um, we will be refining these documents to bring them back to you all um, for approval. And we want to be able to do that in a timely manner. So I would just welcome additional feedback. Some items that seem to have a lot of discussion was whether or not we, we should be making a request around the main gate interchange as opposed to um, focusing just on the multimodal request or on, um, maybe SSMCP's priority of the Nisqually River Delta. So I'd, I'd welcome, um, additional feedback offline on, on that point. It didn't seem to be fully resolved in our discussion today.
Then we'll go to Ms. Farmer.
I didn't specifically have a, a comment on that. I did have, um, two general items that I'd like to, I'd like to, um, talk about. The, um, I loved how, um, uh, Mr. Johnston and, and Mr. Vargas, uh, uh, gave our congressional delegation some love at the very beginning of the federal priorities list. And, um, it was great. And we knew what committees everybody was sitting on and, and how they were well positioned to, you know, for our partnership to go forward. And our congressional delegation, our, the state congressional delegation. And our congressional delegation, our state congressional delegation, I believe deserves the same kind of treatment. So I would request a couple of sentences about about how they're well positioned and and our partnership and that sort of thing. It's not critical for the for the functioning of your relationship or for or for moving things forward. But actually, I think it's a very nice thing, very nice thing to do. So I'd like to propose that for consideration. The second thing is Mr. Br, uh, Councilmember Branstadter. I I promised I would, I would get back to this, but I would like to see a connection between our council goals and all of the sections that are in both the legislative priorities and the the policy manual. It doesn't have to be every single ask in every single section. Sorry, it doesn't have to be every single ask, but you know, we have a housing and homelessness section, and so what goals does that connect to? We have a transportation infrastructure section. There's a community and economic development section. If that's an unreasonable ask, I will withdraw, but it really helps tell a story. It helps. Onboard new council members, it it does a lot of things.
Mr. Walkie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a couple of items, I think with the short session, I think that if we you know, ki- keep a, like you said, you know, keep a pretty short list and and, you know, if they can make some changes to those, to those use of force bills and they help clean that up for for our, for our police and prosecutors. If we don't have statewide zoning, tho- those are all positives. I think going forward, and and you talked about it a little earlier tonight, and I I appreciate your input. I think we as a body and and al- along with you, you two individuals that we're going to have to have a discussion because I'm not seeing a path forward on on moving that washed up facility. I I'm 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 just, I'm not hearing any path forward. I mean, it's very expensive. I guess we would have to pay to move them, which is something we probably can't do. So I think for, after this next session, we're going to have to have some meetings of the minds, or or is it something we should even can continue to consider? And just wait for maybe development to occur on that site next to it, making the property so valuable valuable where a, where a a developer will just say, hell, how much money do you want? And get it to the point where the state just says it's worth our while to leave. Because I'm not seeing that for us. And and I don't want to, you know, it's it's late and you've been very patient, but I guess I just don't see a path forward. So and next year after the session, I think we need to, you need to put your heads together with with the city manager and and then discuss with us whether we, that's just something we should just walk away from. But thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you ladies so very much for your information tonight. I was going back to Councilmember Farmer's comments about adding the council goals to that. And I was just going to ask, how difficult would that be for you guys to work into that?
Actually, let me answer that. That's, um, Councilmember Moss, that's not very difficult at all to add. Because these are all driven from your council goals, so. Okay, it it can be done.
I think that would.
City staff would need to assist us in doing. If John says it's easy, then then yeah, there you go.
I think that would help tell the story and and to lay it out a little clearer to others reading is sort of helpful. Thank you.
I guess if I may, I I just offer a comment that for for your all consideration, I think the the legislative agenda and policy manual, the intended audience for the legislative agenda is really our our state legislative delegation. And so we want to make sure that that document is as helpful and and user friendly for them. The the policy manual is definitely a reference guide for our delegation, but but I am, you know, a reference guide for the city and and for Brianna and I. So I think, you know, if it makes sense to incorporate the city council goals into one of the documents, I think the policy manual document is the one that makes the most sense.
Yeah, I'd agree.
Yeah, I think just a brief, it doesn't have to spell out everything, but just, just a connection.
Yeah, and and all the items in the legislative agenda are in the policy manual. So if we add it into the policy manual, then then the like, the connection, the linkage is there. But it allows our legislative agenda to remain that one page, very succinct, easily comprehensible document that we need for the legislative session where we've got, you know, the hallway conversations, brief fifteen minute meetings, hopefully in person this year, but we'll see.
Thank you.
The the other thing we haven't discussed is whether we should have a, it won't be the legislative session, but a a position with respect to redistricting. We have the enviable position of having two legislative delegations representing Lakewood as the pretty much the core of their district or a very substantial part. And it could be that we end up all in one legislative district, and it could be that we ended up in three, and so we're not important to anybody. So I would, just, at at some, some point here in the near future, we I think we should talk about that as a, as a policy matter, whether we want to actively participate in that. We have a common theme. You know, I'm.
We have been closely monitoring the redistricting process, and I believe Shelley's provided um, a good analysis of the proposed maps and what they would each mean for the city of Lakewood, and you all have received that via email. And our recommendation was was, I I think there was even some draft talking points made on on how to weigh in in response to those proposed maps.
Yeah, I s- I I saw three I could live with and one I thought was bad, but that's probably what everybody says when they look at them.
I will note for for the benefit of any public watching as well, that the redistricting commission's website includes the four proposed maps and has a function on it where you can go in and and make a comment on each proposed map, on a specific location in each proposed map. And the comment could be as much or as little as a thumbs up or a thumbs down, I like, I don't like. Or it could be as extensive as providing written comments. So I would just direct you all as individuals or the any public listening in to to take a look at their website because they have made it very easy for public comment to be made on each individual map being proposed.
And I'll just add that the deadline for what they're calling, they're calling those third party maps, the deadline is quickly approaching. I believe it's October twenty-second. Because the commissioners have to reach agreement on an agreed new map, no later than November fifteenth.
All right. Anything further? Don't see any hands up. Thank you very much. I appreciate your comments and guidance as always, and we look forward to those revisions so that we can polish this up and go down and see if you can improve your already impressive batting average down.
Thank you very much. Well, it was good to see you this evening.
Hey, good. So back. Back to Mr. Vargas.
Yeah, so thank you, Ms. Helder and Ms. Murray, for that great presentation. I'm going to go over the proposed changes to the county policy manual now. Let me share my screen here. Can you all see that okay? Yep. Okay. Yeah, so I'm just going to go through the policy manual item by item. Please feel free to ask questions and provide comments as I go through. So the policy manual begins with the Indigenous People and Lands Acknowledgement and Commitment to Equity Statements that is also included in the state policy manual. So these are verbatim from there. So under Community and Economic Development, the first three items here remain unchanged. So for Regional Planning, the city still supports its continued partnership with the Pierce County Regional Council. As for the Puget Sound Regional Council, the city still supports a more equitable sharing of federal transportation dollars that have been allocated to the P S R C. And the city still opposes any incursion by the P S R C into local land use, housing issues, and equity issues. And on that note, the city would still support and take the lead on forming an alternative to the P S R C by forming a Pierce County Metropolitan Planning Organization and Regional Transportation Planning Organization. And as mentioned, the state policy manual, we no longer need to include this item about tax increment financing as the state recently passed a tax increment financing package. So for annexations, the, there haven't been any recent developments in the Arrowhead Partridge Glen Annexation. So this item remains unchanged, although there have been recent developments in the Camp Murray Annexation Process. So the city in Camp Murray recently jointly completed the Camp Murray Annexation Analysis Report in two thousand twenty. And after that report, the Camp Murray leadership is not supportive of annexation after the report found that annexation would not be revenue neutral and would result in increased costs for Camp Camp Murray. However, recent discussions between city and Camp Murray are focusing on future boat launch improvements over the next few years. So for the annexation process of the urban area of J B L M, there haven't been any recent developments here, so this item remains unchanged. The city would still consider an incremental approach to annexing the urban area of J B L M. And that would start with the annexation of the American Lake Veterans Administration Medical Center and the American Lake Veterans Golf Course. So the Lakewood Population Allocation Section now includes new additions that add more specificity about the constraints that impact Lakewood's ability to meet population allocation targets. So some of these changes include J B L M's air corridor zones that prohibit urban residential development, several lakes and associated lands that can only be developed at lower densities, and now referencing Pre-Incorporation and Pre-Growth Management Act existing developments. And for the latter section here, we are now including the both Management Act and multi-county planning policies as avenues where policy direction should be included. As for libraries, the city is still committed to improving its partnership with the Pierce County Library System. So for the items under Community Health and Resilience, this item here, Behavioral Health and Chemical Dependency Tools, has been removed due to the recent passage of the Pierce County Mental Health Tax. That's the one tenth of one percent increase in sales tax to pay for behavioral health services here in the county. Although we are now adding this item concerning the American Rescue Plan Act. So almost a hundred and seventy-six million dollars has been allocated to Pierce County twenty twenty-one from ARPA. And the city requests the county to continue to support programs that benefit Lakewood residents and businesses. And included here is a non-exhaustive list of county programs such as residential and commercial rent, mortgage, and utility assistance, residential and commercial landlord assistance, navigator services, infrastructure funding, such as completing the sewer system in Lakewood, which would fall under the purview of the Pierce County Sewer Utility Agency. And also continuation for the BIPOC Business Assistance Program, which includes the BIPOC Business Accelerator Program. And finally, cap continuation for the capital support for housing preservation and construction for residents at or below eighty percent of A M I. So for this next item here, this remains unchanged. The city encourages, it still encourages the county to move the flood control zone district to a tiered rate based on risk of flooding. And the city still supports using flood control funds to mitigate existing risks rather than subsidize new development within the flood zone. So I guess this is a decent stopping point. Are there any questions from the council or comments about the proposed changes?
Things from council. Ms. Farmer.
I, there wasn't a a section that was proposed to be changed, but I'm curious about the library's statement.
Yeah. So to answer your question, council member, I have not, in my work in collaborating with various city staff to gather these changes, I have not heard any talks about any changes with this relationship, but I I do welcome them. There are any.
It just, it seems vague. I'm not sure why we need to improve our partnership and where where we're going with that. So I I did have that question. It's like the city manager has his hand up.
Sure, Mr. Caulfield.
Thank you. Yeah, Councilmember Farmer. So that could, might need to be tweaked a little bit, actually, because we do, we do have a partnership with County Library to move forward with bringing two new libraries to to Lakewood and Pierce County Library System is in the process of resurrecting that here, here in Lakewood. So and so we could take a look at that language and, you know, maybe strengthen that a little bit.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Farmer. I'm just putting in a note here. We will revise this statement. So let's see here. So under Public Safety, this item, transfer of E nine one one tax from Pierce County Department of Emergency Management to South Sound nine one one. There hasn't been, well, there hasn't been any sort of solidified change in this. So the city still supports allocating more of the E nine one one tax to the South Sound nine one one to offset operational dispatch costs. However, there has been, so the Pierce County Executive Bruce Danmeyer has recently agreed to moving these funds. So as that sort of situation develops, this item will be changed or dropped. And I see a question from Councilmember Branstadter. Oh, you're muted.
Yeah, no, I I'm I'm fine.
Okay. Yeah, so as the situation evolves, we'll, we'll come back to this item. So this next item here, Geographic Equity and Discharge from State Facilities, this comes from the state policy manual. Although we are framing it as the city requests the county to support additional changes to D S D S H S. So as that section has been worked shop tonight, I will collaborate with our state legislative team to make the appropriate changes here in the po- county policy manual. However, this statement is still kept. The city will continue to monitor Western State Hospital Task Force Evaluation of Pierce County Resources. So moving on here, this next section, Adult Family Home Businesses, is also from the state policy manual. So any changes made after tonight with that section from the state manual, I will reflect over here. And these next two items, State Hospital Reentry Program and Enhanced Services Facilities, these also come from the state policy manual. So there have been no changes here due to there not being any changes in the policy state manual. But as for video arraignment, so there have been some changes here to reflect the situation going on with the pandemic. So currently, the county does not provide consistent video arraignment at the Pierce County Jail. So sometimes they will allow for a video arraignment option, but other times will require an in-person arraignment. So we are asking as a city to, for the county to implement a consistent video arraignment policy. So we may, so the city can safely and effectively provide public's defense services to jail populations that continue to be impacted by the pandemic. And so for this item here, Pierce County Prosecuting Attorney's Office, there haven't been any recent developments. So the city would still like to see consistent, transparent, and timely felony charging and filing, and would also still greatly benefit from regular. and would also still greatly benefit from regular communication regarding the cases reviewed from the attorney's office. So for the transportation.
If I could comment on the, the public safety there.
Yeah.
The one thing that we need the county to try to do some kind of fix on, and I don't know what we're telling, but has to do with their booking standards. You know, we, that the, the, the people that they are using COVID as the, the, the explanation. There are so many folks that they are failing to book, even if we bring them down there, that it's having that negative impact on, on, on public safety and a positive impact on, and, and, and recidivism, I guess.
Okay.
And, and so it's not within our realm to fix, but because we're repented upon the policies of the jail. But the, to the extent that they can do something to at least be, be booking a greater range of offenses rather than our police officer just having to take names and, and letting people go for stolen cars and, 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 and other things. I would be in favor of mentioning something like that in the policy manual because I'm not hearing that there's any near-term plan to make significant change.
Yeah, thank you for that suggestion, council member. Yeah, I will work on developing that section here. Yeah, I think that would be a good addition under this public safety. These items here. So yeah, thank you for that. I will look into that and make an addition here.
I think, I think if we call for a change, we should be offering a solution. I mean, the, the sheriff's department's turned back the same way. The courts have limited the density. There have been COVID outbreaks. So I think everybody involved wants to have a higher density in the Pierce County Jail, in jails in general, everywhere. But between courts and COVID, that's not happening. So I, I, I don't know what it does to have it in a policy manual if we aren't asking for the implementation of a solution.
Well, is there a, I, I mean, the range of solutions the county could consider could be leasing space where it's available to augment the capacity of the, the county jail. That, you know, we, we have, we have done that with jails around the state in past history. And there wouldn't necessarily be an impossibility for the county to contract where there is space to, to be able to hold folks. That you know, there, there, there may be some less restrictive custodial environments that the county could establish. But I really don't know, I, you know, I, I sort of defer to the, to the chief regarding the viability of any of those. I, I guess I'm not acceptance of that, that, that there are no solutions, but I also agree it'd be nice if we should propose one or more.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Branstad. I think those are good points. I've written them down here. So I think a next good step for me, I'll collaborate with Chief Zaro, run these by him. And we can workshop this section here, but I, I agree, we, we should include these booking standards under the, under the public safety section here. So I'll workshop on that point. So let's see here. So for the transportation infrastructure section, these first three items remain unchanged. So for the Pierce County Transportation Coordinating Committee item, the city still recommends that the Pierce County Regional Council increase the transparency of the Transportation Coordination Committee specifically in how the TCC scores and determines funding recommendations. And as for Pierce County Sewer Utility, the city still urges Pierce County to proactively plan for and build sewer system expansions in urban areas that are within the county. This would include Lakewood as well. And so for this multimodal transportation study item, this is from the state policy manual. So the city still urges Pierce County to support a request that the legislator allocate $250,000 for the multimodal transportation assessment. And for the last item in this section, this, which concerns future commercial airfields at JBLM, this section has been updated to reflect the changes in the state policy manual, as this item is in, in both manuals. So the city still urges Pierce County to oppose the use of JBLM as a commercial airfield. And for the last two sections here, these items remain unchanged. So under military affairs, the, this North Clear Zone item hasn't had any major developments in it lately. So the city still requests Pierce County's continued partnership in vacating the North Clear Zone in JBLM. And we are still asking that this agreement continue to be a priority for the county in its local actions to state level advocacy efforts. And for general government, the Innovative Service Solutions item remains unchanged. So the city still supports innovative service solutions and technological advancements that would mutually benefit Pierce County and Lakewood. And some examples here include the PAL system and traffic signal contracting. And that concludes my presentation of the updated county policy manual. I invite any questions from the council.
Any questions for Mr. Vargas? Ms. Farmer.
Not a question, but I wanted to make the same request of adding the council goals that we're adding to the policies, policy manual, state policy manual to this one. I'm, if, I'm tired. I can't find my words.
So all right, yeah. Yeah, I think that shouldn't be too bad. I, I'll definitely take the lead on that project for all of the, for the state policy manual and this one as well. So I think it'll be a little bit easier for here since this is much more closer to home. But yeah, yeah, that shouldn't be a problem.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, council member.
Anything, anyone else? Right, and go back to the city manager to make sure we have everything. If you could stop sharing green. Is there anything further if you want to bring up Mr. Coffey?
I know, Mayor, you touched on a number of items here. You know, a, a, a lot of your suggestion and ideas, we can get turned around relatively quickly. My recommendation would be to bring back these three policy documents for your final review and consideration as part of your November 1st regular meeting. And I think we can definitely be squared away and be ready to do that. And the, and the reason I'm recommending November 1st rather than November 15th is on the state side, we are in the process of reaching out to our legislators from the 28th and 29th District to try and schedule some time either, hopefully in the early part of November. So we'd like to have this adopted, if not the middle to latter or even early December. But we would, we would prefer to have it in place sooner rather than later. And with that, that's, that's what I have on my end, Mayor and Council.
Okay. Is there anybody who has a burning desire to have council comments?
It's, it's not on your agenda, Mayor.
Seeing that. Thank you for coming tonight and working this over, good comments. And I will probably.
You froze.
Probably not be able to sign in on Monday. Don't count on me being there. And that we will see you next time. We're adjourned.
Good night, everybody.